Start with pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remove amendment of meeting agenda items.
Yes, I have an amendment to the agenda, Mr. Chairman. We're gonna pull ten point three out of the consent agenda. We're gonna move this in regard to the shop. The president will be checking this.
Okay, we have a motion.
I move to approve the meeting agenda items for November thirteenth, two thousand nineteen as amended.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the meeting agenda items for November thirteenth as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve of minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of October thirty of two thousand nineteen as presented.
It's been moved in second to approve the minutes of October thirty of two thousand nineteen as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One abstaining.
One abstaining. Correspondents?
I have you, Mr. Chair.
Public comment? Reports? Mr. Stratton?
I am.
And Mrs. Schulmberger, am I correct?
Yep, so today I have, I have FFA, some FFA students here. And Mrs. Schulmberger is also here to help out because Mrs. Reese is with a handful of students at Eagle Point at the Ag Sales Competition. So with me today I have Mrs. Schulmberger, Mr. Price, and Mr. Reese. It's just three of you. Yep, and they're gonna give a presentation. So go ahead, guys.
I'm Zach Reese, this is Logan Price.
We're gonna give you an ag farm report. So our ag farm is a hundred and sixty acres on the south side of Stock Drive. And it's split into two seventy-five acre allotment or fields. And it's split by Thomas Creek. On the east side, we have weed lines. And it's a grass field. And on the west side, we have a pivot that we just put in. And so on the west side this year, we harvested sixty-eight tons of grass hay and that was sold. And on the east side, we grazed sixty-seven yearling heifers that Holliday Ranch put on there. And we got, towards the end of the year after we harvested the hay, we moved them over to the west side and we ripped and farmed the new pivot field and planted triticale in there. And our plan for that is we're gonna put triticale in there for a year. And the next fall, after we harvest the triticale crop off, we're gonna farm it again and we're gonna put it in a grass stand so then we can hay the grass and graze cattle on it after that's gone.
So Lakeview FFA members have spent a considerable amount of time at the ag farm this year. This summer, Riley Schulmberger, Logan, and myself built braces across the creek to get the main line across to the pivot from the pump on the other side. At the end of the summer, we also took out those braces in the main line to prevent winter damages to them. We're also responsible for installing and removing the water gap for the cattle that are on the ag farm. This fall, the Ag Three class took soil samples off both sides of the ag farm and sent them to Western Laboratories to be tested. The results showed that there were the low quantities of nitrogen and phosphorus in the soils. And the Ag Three class has been studying fertilizers. So we used those results to create a nutrient management plan for the ag farm. As well as doing the soil test on the ag farm, the Ag Three class also installed five goose nesting boxes along Thomas Creek. We're excited to see what projects we'll do next year on the ag farm. Are there any questions?
Triticale, 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 triticale. Uh, well.
Twigs made with tomato?
Yeah.
Well, I took cereal grains in college. It was called triticale back then, but it was about forty years ago. Maybe things changed.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know the exact way to say it. Just check it out. And we also have Bridget to talk about the food share and the hunger backpacks.
Uh, hi, I'm Bridget Tullmer and I'm a member on the Food Drive Committee. So this year, the freshman ag class decided to take over this, the Food Drive as a class project. And we labeled boxes and we took them down to the elementary school and put them in each of the kids' classroom. There was also boxes in each of the English teachers' classroom so that high school students and middle school students could donate cans or money to get ten points extra credit. So in the little kids' school, there was boxes and each class competitively donated food or money to win, and it was a competition between classes. Uh, the winner in each school had an ice cream party. Uh, the sophomores also went trick-or-treating for canned food. And overall, in the end, we had fifteen hundred plus pounds of food and two hundred plus dollars. Any questions? And so, uh, this year, the FFA is partnering with Honor Society for Hunger Backpack. And, um, I went down one day when we were picking up food from the ADA in Fremont and gave out applications to each teacher to hand out to their kids. We received forty-five applications back from all of them. And it was just an application saying that you need it and you didn't have to prove that you did need it. So what they will be doing for these kids, they will get backpacks or bags of food for all kids in the family for two meals in each day of vacation. The junior ag class is learning about nutrient-dense foods to put in the backpacks and bags. And the middle school kids are learning about food insecurities and wondering where your next meal is gonna come from. Uh, the high school and FFA, the Honor Society and FFA will be delivering these backpacks the day before vacation. Any questions?
Thank you.
Is this Thanksgiving? And Christmas.
And Christmas.
Merry Christmas. We received, or FFA initially received a grant, correct?
Twelve hundred dollar grant from the National FFA Organization. It's called the Living to Serve Grant. And then we have several ranches around that have donated money to increase that just because our population got so large so fast. And several individuals have donated money. Seroptimus is, um, they're, Barb Simpson's trying to work with them on something. The, um, we have a contact with the Mormon Church, Kristen Collins, who's gonna work on maybe doing like a peanut butter drive. Um, we're looking at like, um, doing some canned fruit drives or canned vegetable drives or possibly even like a tuna helper drive because you can buy the box and the tuna with it. It's pretty scary when we have forty-five families K-six that are telling us that they have food insecurities over the vacation. And that, I mean, the very first day that one of our first grade classrooms, they came back with five of them the very first day, then we knew that we were, that we were in for it.
They initially planned twenty?
We initially planned for twenty. Yeah, the Honor Society kids worked or served at the Endowment Dinner. What was that, two weeks ago? And the library gives us a donation when we serve. And so that donation's kicking right into the hunger backpacks to help pay for that because, um, we can't, we can't do all of it. And then Christie's, FFA kids, a whole bunch of them sorted cans that, uh, they had done an FFA can drive. And then the solar people was at length.
Yes.
Donated a bunch of cans for that. And so the FFA kids, once they took the cans back, everything that the solar people donated is going toward that. So I think, is that gonna be like eight hundred dollars, do we think?
Uh, that was.
That was Riley and Brian, wasn't it?
That was.
So there's a chunk of money that's coming from, really coming from the solar people that'll kick into this too. At the same time, we did have the hospital. Kristi and I met with, um, oh, Kristen Hill from the hospital. And they are really interested in us being able to do it every weekend because this is a partnership that, or this is a program that Hepner does every single weekend. And unfortunately, Kristi and I both felt like we did not have the time to be able to do that. But the hospital badly wants to have an organization be able to take that over. But it's, it's labor intensive and we have to have spot to store food all the time and, you know, and every weekend and so. But Hepner FFA does it every single weekend. The kids take home a backpack. So, and then obviously, we, we have the need. The best thing about this was is people didn't have to prove that they were either on, or that they were on free and reduced lunch. It was just bring us back in the blue thing, tell us how many kids you have and what their ages are. And then we ask for, do you have a microwave and oven? You know, those kinds of things because it's, we don't send home microwave stuff if they don't have a microwave, kind of the thing. So it's pretty disheartening really and kinda scary that we have that much food insecurity in our community.
And clothing too.
I think that's the Seroptimus piece. The Seroptimus piece through Barb Simpson's clothing drive.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Warner, I've kinda threw your name out there of all the coats and jackets and everything. I saw down there, uh, the fans, Mr. Stratton. I'm sure you have quite a array of clothing too. It never gets claimed and I hit Miss Simpson today, you know, within a reasonable amount of time, it's not claimed, maybe we can help him out with that, so.
So I think this is pretty awesome. I do have a question though. Have we gone to the city council or county commissioners? Well, I don't know where, where they would stand, but I mean, the school is a part of the community. And the community really falls under the umbrella of the city or the county, depending on where they live. And I'm not sure that those entities are quite aware of some of the food insecurities that may be in their own camp or jurisdiction.
Yeah, and I don't know exactly what Christie's plan is. I mean, the big thing is, is this could be like a Goliath kind of a project. And right now, I think we have interest and I don't know what would happen if we, if we couldn't get there, you know, with that. I, I, like I said, you know, the hospital was willing, they're willing to write a grant. They just are, they just don't have the manpower to be able to manage that. And so I think the hospital realizes it's there. And no, we have not gone. We reached out to some individuals, like Outback Butcher Shop is donating. Like I said, there's quite a few ranches around that have donated fifty or a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars just to kinda help us out with that, some individuals.
In past discussions about food insecurities that have had, you know, I think the school plays a very important role in that. But we are a one entity out of so many organizations within this community that I'm just not sure that everybody is on the same page of what the issue really looks like. Like if we, I mean, if we have that kind of data that says, you know, in this amount of time, we have forty-five people, just K-three-twelve that are asking for this, where does that look like?
Wasn't this K-through-six?
It, well, it's K-through-six, but it covers all the, it covers all the kids. But you have to understand too, Justin, we're not talking about forty-five people.
Yeah.
We're talking about forty-five families. And there are very few of them that have one child on there. And one of the things that we're concerned about is we didn't make it very clear on the form and we realized that later that we didn't ask for preschool age kids that are in that household too that we need to be concerned about. And, and also the high school age kids, like those, the people, we just handed those sheets out, K-six. And so mostly the data that we got was for K-six kids. When we know that those people have siblings, those kids have siblings in high school or middle school and siblings that are preschool age. So we, Christie and I have not got a firm plan. I mean, the idea is that we would make some phone calls to the home to see if there are preschool age or high school age kids that we, you know, because we wanna be able to serve the people and we feel like we can. Financially, we feel like we're in a good spot to be able, just to take care of Thanksgiving and Christmas and most likely, um, spring vacation. Maybe not all of spring vacation, but we would hope to be able to have, you know, some money left over for that. I mean, Honor Society will serve at several more functions and they always donate a hundred, two hundred dollars. And so we can kick money right back to it as well.
And then what happens for summer vacation?
Well, that, the, that's a good question. And that's the reason why the hospital contacted us because the hospital has the summer food program. And so they could write the grant that tied with the summer food program that would work. And that's why, um, why that, that would work. So that summer food program does its.
No, I agree. I'm not trying to.
Right, no, I appreciate your comments.
This is a very big issue that is gonna take a global solution within our community. And we are just one small piece of that.
The hospital has been a good partner in the past because we're a summer food site at Hay for that. And, um, when they're doing them out at the park, they're around a hundred meals a day. And then we work with that summer food program to do all the lunches for kindergarten camp for fifty a day just during that period.
And then they're doing the, the public work, right? And unions the site?
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
They didn't have enough business out there. They just, um, and so that, that wasn't working. But I really applaud the FFA kids for step, for stepping in and Honor Society for, for jumping in and doing this because previously, it's been on a smaller scale, the teachers have been doing it. And they get the reusable shopping bags and they fill them every week for kids. And so it's nice to, to spread that burden out just a little bit away from our teachers. But especially in the Fremont building, they were in there grocery shopping on Wednesdays and Thursdays to make sure that those kids ate through the weekend. So, and then I think Jay has talked to the Knights of Columbus a little bit about extra backpacks if there's a need for that because we weren't sure what their, your response would be from this. But that was part of some of the, the cash that would be generated from the burger stand with the Share the Warmth project.
This weekend.
Yeah, and then, and then I think they're gonna do a couple of different weekends with the Casey Burger Stand and, and that was gonna be available. Because we told them we were pretty good on school supplies and we really are pretty good on coats because we have obviously fifty of them sitting on the bench at all the time for them. And so the, the food is the biggest issue right now.
And you might be able to partner with, I, I'm not sure the organization that does in December, um, they hand, the presents, like a bunch of bag, a bag of presents and coats and hat and gloves. And they might also have the backpacks too. That's when it would encompass what you're doing. And that program has also got some sort of funding that's helping the community. Who's in charge of that one though?
I also think it's important to realize, um, what our kids are learning, our students are learning around this project. Because most of our students, I'm looking at the three behind me, I know their families well. They don't know what it's like to come home to an empty fridge or an empty cupboard and to have that life lesson to realize that they're, they have classmates who don't have what they have and appreciate life and learn how they, when they have a chance to become a leader, can step in and do something like this, um, at some magnitude also. So I think it'll be interesting to have dear kiddos, Honor Society kiddos and the FFA kids reflect on that and put something together to, I think, the biggest thing to provide a lesson for, for our students.
And I think there's a connection there with the client at the Lake County Food Bank to you and how that all works and that.
We did contact them to let them know what we were doing. We kept the poll from their source. We just, as Bridget was telling you, we just pumped a bunch in there too and.
But I mean, that may be an opportunity if some of those families aren't aware of other avenues to, you know, backpacks of food to put in.
The hours and the address or something. That's a good idea. That is a good idea.
Some sort of information so they know there's other avenues as well.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, food share and food bank. Make sure you get both, both entities.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Well done, FFA.
Thank you.
Best presentation of the fall.
Lance might want to.
Yeah.
Okay. ASB report.
Yeah, Lance, uh, would be today, Lance will give the ASB report.
So I am Lance Hookman. Um, I will be representing our ASB president, Elizabeth Lopez, because she couldn't be here tonight. Um, so the LHS Student Council and the Leadership Class have been very busy these last couple of months. We have sixteen student council members and we have two in the Leadership Class. And, uh, we have, so at the beginning of every month, we decide on all of our projects and we set those in motion and we begin to do all of those kinds of things. Uh, this year, we are continuing to give birthday grams, uh, create locker signs to support clubs and sports. And we also write the Stall Street Journal and that is updated regularly. Uh, we create bulletin boards to keep people informed and to just, you know, kind of liven up the school a little bit. Uh, we also planned a welcome back assembly and that had a few hiccups, but we were able to recognize Mr. Stratton and the new staff members. And we had a little fun, uh, with our dress code policy and showing students what they could and could not wear. Uh, October has been our busiest month so far with planning our homecoming events. So our theme for homecoming was Lights, Cameras, Action, which was, you know, different movies and stuff like that. So on the Sunday before Homecoming Week, we decorated our hallways with different themes. So like the senior hall did Jumanji. Uh, the sophomore, or no, the juniors did Titanic. I can't remember the other ones.
Sophomores played Breakfast Club.
Yep, the sophomores played Breakfast Club. And then the juniors did.
The freshmen.
Er, freshmen. Uh, anybody? Narnia? That was it? Okay. So, and then during the week of homecoming, we had multiple dress up days that were themed like our movies and such. And so students would dress up and show their school spirit and support. Um, we had the bonfire on Wednesday night. We had the He-Man tournament on Thursday. And the juniors beat the seniors in a close match. And we had our homecoming parade on Friday after our homecoming court assembly and announcements. And at the football game, we recognized the court and had a traditional burning of the LHS. On Saturday, we had a dance and we actually hired a professional DJ for that. And he put on a very good show. He was very good. And the Leadership Class actually set a goal for homecoming of having sixty-five percent attendance on all of our events. And while we did not meet that goal, we still felt that we had pretty good attendance and pretty good, uh, involvement for all of our activities. After homecoming, we usually regroup and kinda discuss things and see how everything went. And we have been working with Francie Winters from the hospital, on a grant to promote positive marketing and promote the teen health fair. Uh, we did in-class presentations and we targeted specific groups with our presentations. And so we addressed a bunch of different issues, like we did, uh, social media or like cyberbullying and that kind of stuff. And mental health was another one that we addressed. And so we addressed multiple issues that we ourselves as students saw in our school and we targeted those kinds of things at the specific groups in which we saw those. Uh, we, uh, we created posters to advertise and the fair was also today. And I, it seems like we got pretty good attendance from what I saw. And lastly, at the beginning of November, certain members of the Student Council attended the OASC Fall Conference in Seaside. It was a very long lo, road trip. And the conference itself was pretty great and I feel like most of us got a lot out of it. And so we're gonna be able to apply those different skills that we learned towards, uh, improving our school and our activities. And so we're actually going over all of that this week.
Is there a singing event last day?
A singing event?
Bridget, you're saying.
Um, are you talking about the, uh, the speaker and stuff?
I thought you guys laughed on the last day loading the buses.
When, so, s, the conference is Sunday and Monday. And Sunday night, we go over to Seaside High School. And there's, so there's eighteen hundred people there. And, and this building designed for five hundred. So we're kinda packed in there like sheep. And Student Council this year, we got a portable speaker. And it's connected to the two, playing their phone. And so we were playing music. And pretty sure on the way out, then we had eighteen hundred students all singing. And Lance, being as tall as he is, he carried his speaker on his shoulder like old school boombox. And so, um, that may have.
Speaker pointed out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He did kinda have a love, so.
Well, we were actually playing it in the very beginning and then.
There was a voice of manner.
Sorry. They had a good time. I had good reports.
Thank you.
You go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Lance.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, seven point three, Dolly Principal's report.
Okay, um, we've got several partnerships that I really very much appreciate with the high school. Besides our peer tutor program where we have anywhere from ten to fifteen to twenty kids coming down to the elementary school to help in the classrooms. They help with everything. Sometimes they're during, during our lunch period. So they, you'll see high school kids walking around the cafeteria, opening little carrots and milks and all kinds of good stuff. But we also have a Breakfast Buddies program. And we have a handful of kids that went through a training with the mentor program and myself. And they come down and they sit with kids during breakfast, visit with them. And they kinda mill around and help those kids start their day off a little bit better maybe than, than it normally would. And then we did, um, our kids really look forward to the canned food drive that we do with FFA every year. And so we have some really fun partnerships with, with the high school kiddos. We had a Halloween parade. K-through-three went to Lakeview Gardens and we staggered them so that we didn't overwhelm them with a hundred and seventy-five of us. And we were in our old costumes and went and, and trick-or-treated over there and had a good time. Uh, the staff did a pumpkin kind of centerpiece, uh, activity one afternoon with bloomers for, for some fun. We've been working with Janice Heigl and Dean. They've both been here at alternating months, working with us with language arts or math. We had sixth graders attend the health fair today. And we've had, since we talked last, we've had a union student celebration assembly and a PVIS assembly. And you kinda are seeing some of that in the paper and help, um, as those come through. We've been pretty diligent about sending those. And then we have some ladies that are trying to create some fun and a little, and are pretty passionate about some dress up days. So we had a pink out and we, for brush cancer awareness. And then on Tuesday, when the kids came back, we wanted to honor our veterans and we, um, all the kids were, not all the kids, but they were dressed in red, white, and blue. And they have a contest and we sponsor it as a school for the kids to dress up for different things. They have another one coming up for civil working as well. And they can dress in black and orange or yellow and gold with them as, sorry. We had great attendance at conference and I'll report that at the next meeting. But I don't, some of my teachers are pretty diligent. They all want a hundred percent. So they're still scheduling some conferences for folks that are out of town and things like that. But they're really doing pretty well with that. We had good attendance in the buildings. We had a book fair going on like we usually do during our conferences. Just finished up picture retakes. We are still receiving some new students, um, yesterday. So, um, to work with some overcrowding, I'm working with Mr. Cahill and Miss Nelson that's over here. We're pulling part of the Fremont Computer Lab out and we dug up some money to put a Chromebook Lab in there. And, um, to, to replace those computers. And I'm scrounging up some cables to create some more teachable space in that computer lab. So they'll have access, they'll have computers probably more than what they had to start. Those computers, I understand from Mr. Reese, are gonna be recycled and put into libraries to replace some very old machines in the Hay and Fremont libraries. So coming up, um, we have bus evacuations next week. We have a fourth grade field trip in town scheduled to go to the woods. And I haven't quite seen the curriculum for that. Uh, K-through-two is headed to Ross Ragland for Union, first part of December. And then we have dates for Christmas holiday programs. Reunions will be December nineteenth and then Fremont Hay will be the twentieth. I'm gonna double check that one, but I think I'm right about that. Yep, nineteenth and the twentieth.
Both Fremont Hay having programs?
Pardon?
Both Fremont and Hay having programs?
At this point. We have a, we have a new music teacher who is just amazing and excited. And she's proposing it tomorrow at staff meeting, so we'll handle that. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Just curious, uh, how attendance was with parent teacher conferences?
It's pretty good, Barry, but I, I have teachers that are still trying to schedule conferences for folks that took advantage of that five-day weekend for the elementary kids. So we don't have all the numbers in. But I'll bring it to you at your next, in next meeting because I require the teachers to report their percentages because I can do that easier. Lots of one-hundred percents, but they're, they're a little bit competitive, so they all want one-hundred percent. So they're still tracking people down at Safeway and their work and so. But it's a pretty good percentage. I'm guessing low nineties, but I don't know that.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Um, at the high school, um, fall sports are over, but I wanna give you a rundown of what we were up to the last couple of days with buses. Today, I sent a bus to Eagle Point for Ag Sales. Uh, I think it's tomorrow, I'm sending a bus to Bend to the Cascade Culinary Institute. Mrs. Dix's class is going with a handful of students to go to Culinary Institute. Pretty excited about that. On Friday, Mrs. Stratton and Mr. Vickerman are taking twenty, twenty-four students to the Trades Job Fair in Redmond. Tomorrow or Friday, Mrs. Snidger is taking a handful of students to St. Charles Hospital for our Diagnosis Day. Middle school basketball went to Bonanza yesterday. And we have a handful of cross crunching gronaders going to Idaho on Friday. And we're really not supposed to be doing anything. And we're really not supposed to be doing anything. So we are still very, very busy and a lot of things happening. I'm excited about the stuff that our students get to do. The Ag sales is huge. The Culinary Institute is getting these kids to go see something that they wouldn't see and to promote Mrs. Dix's curriculum. The Trades Job Fair to get Mason to take a handful of students and Tanya with her step-up students to, to, um, Mrs. Stratton to step up. To that's amazing. So I'm excited. Our medical kids get to go to a big hospital and see how that's operating. I'm excited about that and you guys supporting and allowing us to do something that I appreciate it. Um, somewhere during the school year, a parent saw this sign on the outside of the band room door that kinda faces the ag shop. And says, it said band or music and that sign's been there forever. I remember it being the same sign forever. And anyways, what ended up is, and I believe this is the parent that was kind of the ringleader, Ms. Carpenter, along with Ms. Johnston and Mr. Brown from Water Creek Correctional Facility in their shop, helped with, along with Mrs. Cohet to design a new sign that's gonna go on the outside of that door. And it's pretty cool and a neat little partnership, um, deal there. So that was pretty neat to have that. Um, presented the other day with the, um, the band class and the student of the one parent that was kinda the ringleader for that. So we got a little positive PR there. Uh, parent teacher conferences, a hundred and eleven students' parents showed up the first night and then a hundred and fourteen the second night. Um, well over two-thirds population of the seven, well, pretty excited about that. Um, secretary mentioned that I was the smallest man, it was about an envelope she's ever mailed out the night of the last parent teacher conference. Um, and it was a nice, slow, steady trickle both nights, uh, not a big rush either night. And we still had a few parents staying after eight, but it was, it was well attended and, um, I felt positive results from it. Um, I don't know if you know this or not, but KCC has over eighty students this fall semester. And I forget, I think it was something like, I was searching like over a hundred and seventeen credits or something like, some crazy number, I know it was over eighty students. And something I'm really excited about too is, um, KCC will now be offering a BA in nursing. So they are gonna have to change their name because they'll no longer be able to be a community college. And I think that's pretty important for us with Mrs. Steniger's curriculum, our hospital here, and also just our kids being able to start here or get their AA degree while still living here. Um, what a neat opportunity we have and to have it right here on our campus. Um, pretty excited about that. Two weeks ago, well, actually it was last year, I finally said yes on assembly. And I'm not a big fan of assemblies because sometimes when you invite somebody and you don't know what they're gonna do, um, they can go rogue and create a headache for a principal. But I went ahead and went with this assembly and I'm so glad I did. Um, the main speaker was Dean Johnson, Victory for Youth. Um, and I can't say enough about the timing and the purpose and the message that Dean sent. But even more, when he talked through his whole presentation, he was talking about this guy, about this guy. And this guy comes off the wall and starts talking and it was him and his story was, was pretty amazing. And what he did is he flipped it around to Dean's story and, um, um, there shouldn't have been a kid that walked out and said, why still have an excuse for where I'm at today? Um, pretty powerful. They did a great job. Probably had twenty kids stay for almost an hour afterwards, at least, for at least an hour afterwards, talking to them. And they were trying really hard to get the two guys out of here. Um, so it was David Johnson, Victory for Youth. The people that brought it to us was local, um, ministerial group. Joel Morris is the pastor that was the leader in that and then David D. Filippo out of Clamette, um, could be more excited about that. And I think even one of the cooler things is when they showed up, the main speaker, David, went into the bathroom, went to the bathroom, set a cellphone down, walked out, got it in the gym and realized he didn't have a cellphone anymore. One of our kids picked the cellphone up and gave it to the teacher. And the teacher brought it to us and he goes, you don't understand, I could buy another cellphone, but the data I have on that cellphone, I would never be able to replace. And he was so thankful. It was, it was pretty cool to have that experience and, and, um, just worked perfect. So I was pretty lucky on that deal. Um, our past program for academic study or success has started. Not the attendance that I would like right now, um, but we are getting a few kids Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday for an after-school in a quiet environment with them to be able to do their homework and we'll start, um, pressuring, um, selling, lobbying for more parents to take advantage of that. And I'm probably gonna open it up to tenth and eleventh and twelfth graders also, not just the initial seven, nine, cause right now I have room and staff can cover that. Um, staff development, uh, we're, we do the monthly Wednesdays. Um, Abid's working on the note-taking in the notebook, but today's was an Abid Wednesday and we talked about not just note-taking, but what next? Now our students are taking notes. Now how are we gonna help them use it? What is the purpose? Why are we making them taking notes? How can we get them to learn how to use their notes besides just taking them in class? What's the true purpose of it? A great staff development led by Ms. Schoenberger and Ms. Mize today. It was awesome. I like it when we teach ourselves, um, because there's, there's a connection, ownership. We also last week had two different, not true RTI, so don't go tell anybody we're an RTI school, but RTI is response to intervention. Grade level meetings and, um, really powerful, got a lot of feedback from the staff we met at grade levels. Talked about students, students that are struggling, how can we help those students? What are you doing in your classes, working what? And then I was able to compile a spreadsheet with every student's name on that we talked about. Um, what are our concerns? What action steps have we done already? What's working? And then there's a column, what's next? And so we'll just continue to share that as a legging document. Excited about that. Um, I continue to meet weekly with our new to the profession staff. Um, just ask how they're doing. We're doing a small book study. Talk about issues, share what's working, what's not working in the classroom and, um, Amy Agorres, Amy Morris, Amy Fortune at the ESD helps me with that and we do it once a week. Uh, and then staffing, I'm back to full staff. But I'm still fighting absenteeism due to illness and still, um, getting at us. Student activities, gave you a taste of what we got going on. So whenever a student goes somewhere in a bus, there's a teacher. And then professional development, whenever I send a staff member to professional development, I gotta bring a sub in. And, uh, we have great subs, but it's, it's not, they're the same as the teacher in the classroom. And I don't know how to combat those because all three are very important or can't do much about it. I think that's it for me at the high school.
We had a health fair today.
Health fair today, yes, sir.
And Mr. Lou's wife had a baby?
Yeah, Mr. Lou's wife did have a baby.
Mark Raymond should be back pretty soon.
Any other questions?
Lot going on.
Yeah, I'm sure I missed a lot. We're, we're jockeying for gym space, um, between, you know, school basketball, club teams. Um, wrestlers are shaking out the cobwebs, basketball players are shooting. It's getting exciting again. Short break.
Looks like director report.
So like Lane said, we finished up the fall. Um, we had a couple state bound playoff teams, you know, girls cross-country finished first in the district and went to state. And, um, didn't place as a team, but our girls did, did pretty good. They ran well. I can't see everybody. Girls soccer also went to state. They went up to Portland to play Oregon Episcopal. And, um, I think we need to applaud them. They, they actually went up one to nothing, which not many teams have against Oregon Episcopal. And Oregon Episcopal is in the finals, um, this, this coming weekend, the sixteenth. And so we played them really tough. We did a really good job at them.
Pretty sure that's their only false award too, is soccer.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, pretty sure, pretty sure they're a soccer school.
Yeah, so I think that, that speaks well. And we have a young coach and we coached, coached him through a lot this year. He learned a lot. Um, it's good, it's good. Um, so like Lane said, middle school basketball's in full swing. They've had two games already. And that's girls only. Remember our boys play in January and February because we're part of the Clymouth County School District League. So we're kind of at the mercy of their scheduling and when they come out with all that, but usually it's ten guaranteed games. And then for volleyball, for example, it's an end-of-the-year tournament too. Um, but girls are doing well and they have been able to, since high school has not begun official practice, to play a home game. And tomorrow, a second home game at the high school, which is great fun for them. And they go to Union for their games. Um, official practice starts Monday for the high school for the winter season. Um, Shannon Ludwig is still out actively recruiting wrestlers. Um, told me today, he made personal phone calls to all the families and the people that had signed up. Talked to them, just explained who he was and what his expectations are. Great guy. Have good signups for girls and boys basketball right now, over twenty already for girls. Um, a lot of young, a lot of young players, yeah. And first contest, our first wrestling match is December sixth at Burns. Um, and then we have a JV boys' basketball home game the fourth. And then our varsity teams leave the fifth to go to Sutherland, um, play, and play South Amquas, so. And we added a, uh, a DMS wrestling coach, cause you know James Bowers is deployed for the year. And we'll hopefully be back next year. So Michael McCully, he's on kind of a one-year, um, coaching, uh, coaching commitment there. Um, and then both girls basketball coaches are returning. Andy Lampin's returning for boys and then Mason Vickerman, um, who went to Seaside with Ms. Mize and the group, um, will be our boys JV coach this year. And then we also received notification from OSAA that, um, our ADM numbers are over the limit for the, the two-way classification. Heck, we were last year when Lane and I went up to Wilsonville. Um, this year, um, neither of us will be able to go unfortunately, uh, due to scheduling. And so fortunately though, with our free and reduced numbers, um, and taking twenty-five percent of that free and reduced amount off of our total enrollment of two-twenty-one, um, it puts us under the cap, so we should be good.
Got a question, um, the after-school study program, what was that for?
PASS, that's what's program for academic success.
Okay, good, grab the. Uh, do we, how do you foresee, are we gonna have some student athletes not make winter sports due to grades?
So we had our numbers, uh, for plans of assistance this fall were much, much lower than last year this time. So that, that, we felt like that was a good thing. Um, Mr. Counts is taking the bulk of that to, with his admin period and providing me some more time. Um, this fall, we had five, if I recall. Last fall, I think it was seventeen or nineteen, one of those prime numbers there. So quite a big difference, um, for our winner. And he and I just touched base yesterday, uh, when I got back to campus. And I believe it was two students at this point. Um, one of them that weren't sure was gonna be going out, one of them had expressed an interest, but won't be eligible. And then there were a couple at the beginning of the school year because of what they'd chosen to do last year. Um, weren't eligible for football, for example, this year already.
And then the PASS program, I assume there's, uh, non-student athletes?
That's for all, that's for all students.
Yeah, so, I mean, is there an idea how many of those?
Well, I, I mean, did we, had we, did we?
You said numbers were kinda low.
I, there's seventeen on the list, that seventh, eighth and ninth graders who, um, meet the criteria to attend, which is two after more. And so we'd like to have all eighteen there, but I think they've only been averaging like five, three, five. And so, like Lane said, we're gonna have to start putting, um, pressure on to see if they'll attend. And then, you know, for freshmen, if they are eligible, you know, at the end of the semester to do a spring sport, I don't know, maybe that can be some kind of motivation. But that, that's something that we have to keep in mind is if they wanna play sports, when? Cause right now PASS is Tuesday and Thursday from three to four. And if they are doing a winter sport, then they miss practice. Um, but then it's also on Wednesday from two to three. So they could definitely make the Wednesday and so we have their practices. It would be that Tuesday, Thursday, but if they are playing, then they would fall under Dusty's plan of assistance and, uh, and potentially get more assistance.
And they still come to that study hall if they're under the plan of assistance. So I think we're getting a lot more place, pieces and support. So what's the next is, a lot of our students totally rely on bus transportation, so after-school study hall's hard. But I think we'll get, um, just like last time when we did this, it took a while to get it rolling. And then also once we got it rolling and the message was out, the D's and F's started going away, so we'll see how it goes. Mrs. Mize is helping me with PASS because she also has an admin period.
Good way to make it cool, or, you know, it's good to be there type of thing. It's good. Anything else? All right, thank you, Dan. Very good. Seven point five, financial report.
Something like that a minute ago. I apologize. I don't know how to be technical, so. Um, so this is year-to-date as of September, um, thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Our actual year-to-date revenues overall, we projected twenty percent. Um, we are actually at twenty-one percent. My, um, difference is right here in the local sources. Uh, at six point seven five percent, six point seven three percent, excuse me, with projection at five point seven nine. And of course, my state source is thirty-three. That's pretty easy to kinda get, um, leveled out right there, cause that's that state school fund. Um, and so that, that one's easier to project a little bit. Sometimes the state sources, um, you have stuff that randomly shows up from time to time. Um, I apologize, that's small. It was not small earlier, so. Um, just a few, a few things here in this, uh, the top ten general sources of revenue for year-to-date. Of course, the one point seven million is our state school fund year-to-date, so that's as of September thirtieth. Um, roughly, we get right about four hundred and thirty-two thousand per month, um, until we kinda readjust things, um, for ADM. And then the, um, obviously taxes by district, um, from the county, one hundred and fifty-three. Uh, ninety-three of, ninety-three thousand of that is public utilities that we get annually. Of course, the regular school day tuition, that, that was a prior year collection from MODOC. Our interest on investments right now sits at thirteen thousand eight hundred with, um, four thousand six hundred and seventy-six collected, if you will, um, in the month of September. Um, and that again is our LGIP account that collects that interest, uh, and it's designated between the general fund and the, uh, ag farm and, um, uh, the athletic fund. Um, so that is their portion as the four, forty-six hundred. Excuse me, um, we did receive the, um, re, uh, under, under the restricted grants and aid, that's thirteen thousand. Ten thousand of that is the outdoor school that we had from the prior year. Um, so that would have been, um, a collection from the prior year, which I believe that Mrs. Warner has that again, um, for the upcoming year. Um, and I believe we've already went on a field trip. Is that correct, fifth graders?
They aren't, they aren't gonna be included in the grant this year.
Okay.
Because they didn't want to participate in the grant.
Okay.
But they did go on a field trip and outdoor school, that field trip.
Okay.
We used our investment dollars, I think.
Oh, maybe that's what it was, sorry. Okay, so penalties on taxes obviously is from the county. Um, we're at twelve thousand for the year, um, so far. Um, and the rest of this, um, was on our books from the prior year, or, excuse me, from the prior month. Um, so overall, we, in the general fund, we collected five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight in the month of September. Um, that's, this is just indicative of the whole of the year-to-date, July to September at this point. Any questions on the revenue? Okay, so our expenses again as of September thirtieth. Um, that makes it really difficult to see. So projected overall, um, we projected to be, um, spending fifteen percent. We've actually spent fourteen point five three, so a little under. Um, salaries and benefits, we're pretty right on, um, just a smidge over. And then of course, um, year-to-date is all other objects, which is consumables, there, there are textbooks and that sort of thing. Um, we projected to be a sixteen percent. We've actually only spent fourteen percent to this point in September overall. I did do that. Yeah, I didn't do anything. I haven't touched anything since I dropped. No, it looks retarded on my screen. But it wasn't, it was bigger. It took us the whole screen earlier, so I don't know. I probably touched something. Um, at any rate, um, top ten, um, obviously is salaries is a top one for us, which is ninety percent of our, 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 um, program anyway. Um, employee benefits, PERS, hundred and ninety-five thousand to date. Um, that is just one full payroll with a, a month of September inclusive in that, so that number gets pretty big. This hundred and thirteen again is that annual payment to PACE for our general liabilities. Um, insurance, consumable supplies, um, roughly about eighty-nine thousand and property services at eighty-five thousand. Now that, the property services is, for example, your heating fuel, your electricity, water, sewer, garbage, your everyday, um, every month type situations. Um, textbooks, fifty-four thousand. This number did jump from, um, August. We did have, um, two orders that we had not. We did have two orders that we had not done. One was for one of the social studies departments and then a math department. So we actually added about 9,800 to that pot of 54,000 to get those books here. So that's inclusive of that. We should be pretty good on textbooks at this point, I would hope. Of course, social security is another benefit. Computer hardware, again, you heard Mrs. Warner talk about the Chrome lab that we put together and that's also inclusive of all the other Chrome labs that we also purchased over the summer. And then travel is about 20,000. Right at the moment, this is September, so about 5,000 of that is from Avid, that San Diego trip since they went, was that end of July, 1st of August? So we got the bills and paid them in September. And so that's a majority of that. The rest of it has been July and August. There's quite a few conferences that happen. And plus that also includes our travel for teams, July, August and September. So mostly September, I guess, is what I should say. Take that back. So pretty minimal in September at this point. So our total expenditures in the month of September was 756,355. Then, so our month ends. So the pink is the prior year, the blue is the current year. 1.5 million is where I'm at. We are still not audited fully. So this is your July 1. We're holding pretty steady August and then of course September, no, excuse me, August, I apologize. I believe this starts June 30th, so I apologize, June 30th, July. August is about 2 million and then we drop a little bit in September to 1.9 because we're fully staffed. Any questions?
Thank you. Right along here, old business. Jen, on the eggshell.
All right. So in front of you is some hard copies, which are part of it, you guys have seen before. The line-by-line item that has the highlights on it is, those highlights have now been filled in when I sent this out originally for the email vote so we could draw up some contracts and get this going. It was minus that plumbing, that Polley plumbing piece and that Tracy electric. And inclusive of that, at the bottom there, you can see contingency of 10,000. So what, I believe it was Friday before I left, Jude sent over to me Polley's numbers, which was ending up to be 20,000 plus Tracy electric at another 7,000. We did do a contingency of 10,000 because we know Carl Tracy is probably right on, but this is just in case, basically the contingency piece of it, just in, just in case something happens. And so that's why we pulled it out of consent because of the fact that you guys had already approved most of this. However, they did give it to me Friday, so I pushed to have a L8 item. Now you will also see Polley quoted at 19,300 and Tracy electric at 6,700. But the reason why there are the 20,000, which I think I explained this in the email, was a 5% for MODOC to ensure that because MODOC is, is our contractor, they're the sub to MODOC. So MODOC ensures them to do the work. And so what I need is basically another in addition to with Polley and Carl Tracy with a contingency of 10.
Need a motion?
Please.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Since this has been ongoing for seven months now, six months?
No longer than that, but sure, I like that number better.
Where did we start at in bars, what this project was going to cost us?
A little over 300,000.
And where are we at?
About 500, includes of that.
One more question. We're talking grant, Lee.
Yes, we are. The first 300,000 was the CTE grant. This, we actually got Measure 98, which we knew we were getting Measure 98, but they actually added about 58,000 to our Measure 98 this year, which I thought it was for the biennium and it wasn't, it was for this year. So that was kind of sweet deal. We do have a couple of obligations with that Measure 98 funds outside of the Ag Shop, which is Odysseyware for the all-ED program. We pay for that out of the Measure 98, which is 16,000. And then we also were committing part of that as our youth employment counselor, part of her salary. I'm kind of trying to figure out ways to kind of jockey her salary around so we can utilize all the Measure 98 that exists. But we'll be darn close to that Measure 98 bump of 58,000 that we didn't expect.
Yeah, we just heard that last week. It was a piece of work that we used to get.
And I had thought it was for the biennium and was cutting it in half and it actually ended up being for a year. So that was, that actually made my day a little bit. So it will help, I guess.
Okay, any other discussion on the eggshell? We have a motion to approve the additions, additional costs.
All move to approve the additional costs for the eggshell finishes as presented.
Move in seconded to approve the additional eggshell work as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, new business, 9.1. Political mechanics.
Yeah, so in front of you, or not in front of you, you're packing. Approximately page 47 is the planned course statement for the Ag Science, beginning Ag Mechanics class. I did not know this, but this is a class that Mrs. Reese has wanted to have for quite some time. When we talked about putting it in the calendar, I suggested to her earlier this school year, if it'd be all right if maybe we had another teacher teach that class to fill a need in a different spot. She goes, how dare you take that away from me? I've been wanting it for a long time. Sorry, just suggesting. But anyways, she's been wanting to teach this class for quite some time. One of the reasons why is this is one of the big activities. The NFFA actually have an Ag Mechanics competition that a lot of our kids like to do. You can see that some of the coursework there that they study is electrical wiring, plumbing of Ags and plumbing of Ag structures, surveying, which I've seen them outside doing, tool repair and maintenance, plasma cutting, oxy gas cutting and parts of identification maintenance of agricultural machinery. It's a semester class. It coincides with her, what she's going to do this next semester is do Vet Science 2 and then she'll follow the next year Ag Science and Vet Science 1. And so she'll still have that Vet Science class. Pretty excited to have it, have staff to teach it. I also think it reaches to a lot of our male population, our hands-on kiddos. So I'm excited about having this class. So I ask that you please approve it.
I don't see anything in there about how to use a pair of pliers, belly wire, duct tape.
And all this glad, right?
Okay.
I move to approve the LHS Ag Mechanics planned course statement as presented.
We move in seconded to approve the LHS Ag Mechanics planned course statement as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. 9.2.
Yes, Lori Theros, who I've known for years, is running for representative position in the state OSBA board. I don't know how many years she's been on there, but I know Lori, she's represented our region well. Our region consists of Lake, Hardy and Clamath Counties. And you know, her credentials are impeccable. She's been on the Clamath City School Board for many years. She's very much in tune with all the political issues that affect OSBA. I've watched her in action at many OSBA events and you know, I recommend approving her or voting for her for that position. She's running unapologized. Anyway, makes your job easier, I guess, so.
Nelson may have noticed she's been a school owner for 25 years. Any further discussion?
I move to approve the official vote of Lori Theo's Board of Directors position for Southeast Region for the 2019 OSBA election as presented.
So move in seconded to approve the official vote of Lori Theros Board of Directors position number four, Southeast Region for the 2019 OSBA election as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Move in seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Announcements.
Reminder of the public meeting at ADK in regards to our facilities through foster strategies next Monday night, the 18th at 6:00 PM. Is there anyone, Janice, or anything you want to speak to?
Yeah, buddy.
Okay. Anyway, we've rolled out the survey through the radio, through various mediums such as Facebook page and the district website. And it will be very interesting to see, you know, what the survey reflects. So Monday night, November 18th, 6 o'clock at ADK.
I will.
I'm planning on it.
Just remember board, that survey was online. I don't know if you guys happened to.
Taking 35.
Well, that makes up for the 35 I didn't do it. All right. Any other announcements?
I have none.
Next board meeting agenda items.
Our list is building. We've got the OSBA policy update batch two. Ms. Watson will be, we confirm she's going to be bringing her third grade down here to do a project report. Susan, is there anything detailed on that you want to talk about as far as what they're presenting right now?
I don't, she hasn't told me what she's presenting because they've been doing several projects. I don't know which one she's featuring, to be honest with you. Because she contacted Candy directly to get on the agenda.
Well, then we'll be surprised.
I will be as well. They've had bug, bug projects going and they've done all kinds of stuff at the other end of the hall. They've had speeches going and so I'm not exactly sure which, which she's presenting.
I'm not sure. It'll be great.
Doc Thompson will be here for the annual presentation of the memorandum of understanding between White County ESD and District 7 as far as their services. Four-day school week, we will do a work session following the regular session to talk about that and prevent, prevent present, have a discussion on that. And unless somebody has something else, I believe that for the time being, that is what's on the agenda. And of course, due to Thanksgiving, we're in a separate November meeting.
All right. Thank you. Good presentations tonight. The high school kids did really good.
They did.
Adjournment.
Good reservation.
Good reservation. Move in seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Chris and Dirk.